Do you remember that?
Yeah.
Mine.
No, stupid idea.
I remember the road.
I forgot that yesterday when I was with Tim and I were having a signing party.
You don't want to.
Hello there. It's okay. Yeah. I've got a Board of Selectmen meeting starting in about a minute.
We're live, actually.
So I'll be on the clock at six thirty, four seventy.
Live from New York.
Yeah, we're live. They're live, sir.
Okay. Excellent. I'd like to call to order a public meeting put on by the Board of Selectmen here at Summers. Today is Tuesday, July twenty ninth, two thousand twenty five, in the Town Hall Auditorium. Please join me with a pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic and to the citizens under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So as I mentioned, the Board of Selectmen is conducting this public hearing today at six P. M. in the Summers Town Hall to receive public comments on the following proposed charter revision questions. Number one, shall the town clerk become an appointed rather than elected position? Number two, shall the Board of Selectmen appoint a town administrator who reports to them and oversees day-to-day operations of the town? Number three, shall the zoning and planning boards be combined into a single appointed body? Number four, shall the dollar amount over which a special appropriation exceeds, thus requiring approval by vote of the town meeting be revised? That's a little convoluted, that question, but we'll explain that more if you need. Number five, shall appointments to fill midterm vacancies change from, quote, "until the next election," unquote, to, quote, "the end of the elected term," unquote? So this is opening this public hearing to public input, comments, or recommendations. There's no further comments, so it's open for comments. Who would like to comment on these questions being asked by the Charter Revision Commission? Dave?
Dave, one hundred and fourteen, Maple. Initially, I'm looking to understand the process as going forward. I mean, are the Board of Selectmen adopting the report from the Commission, you know, piece by piece, or is it, you know, adopting the, as a, as a single action, you know, collection of proposals? Is the wording for the questions on the ballot already established? How was that established, or is it yet to be done, and by whom? Some of those kind of logistical things, can you explain the process from here forward?
Good question, yeah. So as far as the recommendations of the Commission, the Selectmen did look at each one individually, and the text behind each one, and the explanation for why, what they considered, and how they come up with their recommendation. We looked at each one individually, and actually, we agreed with every single one of them. But we did look at them individually, so as far as the text of what's going to be on the ballot, I don't think we've decided that yet, no. But we've got recommendations, I think, from Charter Revision Commission as to what it might want to say.
The recommendations of the questions.
And what was your last question?
Oh, just, um...
Process.
The process from here to election day.
So after this, I think the Selectmen will determine what the language is that's going to be on the ballot, and hopefully, the whole purpose of the language is to be clear and very appropriate and unambiguous. And that was the problem we had last time, of course, with the language. People were voting and not sure whether they should vote yes or no, because they didn't know how to read the language, and it was not a good situation. So, yeah, we're very tuned in to making sure that we have very clear language and it's easily understood by everyone.
Will there be a separate question for each proposal?
I think that's the way we're going to go.
Yeah, I think that's the way.
That's the way we're headed.
They're different, they're different, so there should be five questions.
Yeah, and the idea, I mean, some great questions, and we should lay this a groundwork. The idea is that every question would stand alone. I think one of the faults last time where some of the conditions, the questions were conditional. So like, if question five passed, but question six failed, we kind of be in trouble, because we wouldn't have a first selectman, but we also wouldn't have a town administrator. You know, so I think this time, the Commission was very deliberate in that if one question were to fail, the other four on their own would stand by themselves.
Good point.
My understanding of the process is that we're holding tonight's public hearing. The Commission's already held two other public hearings. Obviously, public feedback and comments are an important part of the process. After this, we make our final recommendations to the Board of Selectmen back to the Commission. They then vote up and down as to whether or not they approve them, and then we make the final ballot questions. And please correct me, Terry, Mike, others, if that's correct.
I believe if you accept them as written, that they're accepted.
They're accepted.
We don't have to do anything. If you have questions, then we have to.
And we had a few minor technical changes that are reflected in the minutes that are here. It doesn't change the recommendation, there were just a few words that were supposed to change.
Clarification, yeah.
And that was more on the explanatory text, not on the actual question.
Yes.
Now, I do have a couple of emails we've received, which I should probably read. This might stimulate some questions by the audience. One is from Mark Murdock, who states, "We are unable to attend tonight's scheduled public hearing, but we would like to voice our opinion that we strongly are in favor of supporting the revisions." Number one, the town clerk position should be appointed, thereby approving the ability to select, train, and manage qualified candidates. Running as an elected position does not meet this criteria. Number two, a town administrator is needed to improve office accountability and ability to effectively manage the operations of the Town Hall. Number three, we, as town business owners, they own Worthington Farm, by the way, we as town business owners have experienced firsthand the frustrations of the lengthy time between the zoning and planning board review process, and feel that the boards should be combined like most boards across the state. Four, revisions to spending need to be adjusted with inflation. Five, midterm appointments should fill the term to avoid changing election schedules. Then we got also an email from Ralph Williams. "Gentlemen, I'll be away on the night of your hearing on the proposed charter revisions, so I'd like to submit my comments beforehand. As I stated at the Charter Commission's own hearing, and indeed have been seeing for the last seven years, I believe the creation of a town administrator position answerable to and working with the policy direction of the Board of Selectmen is an excellent idea. I also favor changing the manner of appointment to vacancies on elected boards, so that the appointees serve for the remainder of the designated term rather than only until the next election. I have misgivings about turning your town clerk into an appointed position, simply because I believe it is statutory to have at least one elected Town Hall official who is not beholden to his or her job to the Selectmen. You may recall that in years gone by, the Town Treasurer often was the person who could offer correct rebuttal to questionable suggestions without fear of losing his job. As things stand now, however, the town clerk is the only such independent official remaining. And I strongly oppose merging the Planning Commission and the Zoning Commission into a single agency. The PZCs often forfeit responsibility of painstaking review of their town plan, conservation, and development as they deal with the minutia of the last zoning application before them. Let's not sacrifice that additional layer of deliberation. Respectfully, Ralph Williams." So this is the two letters we received, and the floor continues to be open for any comment or recommendations or questions.
Good evening, Gary Schizel, twenty-sixth Harvet Hill Drive. I believe this appointment of a, or hiring of a town administrator is long overdue. I've felt this way for several years, that, and the last time we went through this with the Charter Commission, we are going to gain significantly by bringing someone on board who really understands the process and what they can do to make this town better. So totally in favor of that. The only question I had was, since it's the first time I've had a chance to look at the documents, I see that there is a four-year appointment for the town clerk being proposed. Just wondering why there's a four-year term there and not a, you know, why is there a term at all, right? You're going to hire someone, they're going to work until we feel that either they're not doing the job, or they want to move on to something else. And so we don't have the same type of four-year appointment for the town administrator, I just didn't understand why one versus the other.
Well, we do have a term for the CFO, which is a two-year term, and as we have a, the Selectmen appoint a committee every two years, who reviews the performance of the CFO and recommends to the Board of Selectmen whether or not to reappoint this individual. As far as the town clerk is concerned, right now, it's on a two-year review, as far as the public voting is concerned. The thinking was that four years...
Four years, actually.
Is it four years, right? Okay. Yeah, thinking was we keep it at four years, and the question you raised is a good one, though, why don't we make it permanent?
Yeah, I mean, you're hiring, hiring someone to work here, right? And so as long as they do their job, and...
Yeah, we have an annual review.
...the performance that you go through every year with them like any other person, I don't understand why there would be a four-year number on it.
We have it for the Treasurer, Finance Officer, the Tax Collector, and the Assessor. So there are three positions that are reviewed every two years.
Periodically, every two years.
And I think the intention was to keep these kind of key positions on that same cadence. I mean, it's obviously, it's why we're here, right? I mean, it's a topic of discussion.
Yeah. So I guess, I guess I would expect the town administrator would be under the same, you know, policies.
Well, we, that was one of the technical changes. So the town administrator would be at will, there's provision in there that the Board of Selectmen could terminate the contract. But we also, the Board of Selectmen proposed language to make the town administrator's performance and compensation reviewed annually.
Absolutely.
And that was, that was the amendment. So that was kind of the feeling, that the town administrator would be reviewed every year, but that the town clerk would be, I think it's four years, was that the proposed law?
So someone could go four years and not necessarily be performing well, and you know that, it's two.
We have an annual review.
Okay, sorry. So there's...
So for cause, yeah.
That's a bit confusing, right? An annual review.
No, I understand the confusion.
I don't know. I don't understand that.
Yeah. Yeah, for cause, we could at any time terminate the person, but it would be...
Yeah, they're not going to be in there forever.
Yeah, if the person stole, yeah, if the person stole or, you know, called misconduct, they could be terminated at any time.
Yeah.
Just like any town.
Or they couldn't, or they couldn't perform the job, I mean, obviously, that's...
That's my question.
Yeah.
Okay.
We have another question coming right up. We look to count on you for once.
I couldn't sit there all night and do nothing.
Yeah, I'll call my wife and go to bring food in for dinner in the Town Hall, yeah.
Hey, the main question I have is that, how are you going to define responsibilities of the administrator and the selectmen to eliminate conflicts? That's question number one. And number two, if a customer has a complaint, who do they see, the administrator or the selectmen? So when you use the words, the broad words that, "they will do the everyday operation of the town," that's pretty broad. And there's got to be some kind of definition between the so-called two top people. How are you going to define that?
Good question. I think the concept is that the town administrator's job would be delegated responsibilities, delegated by the Board of Selectmen. They would say, "These are the areas we would like you to," and like, for instance, supervision of town departments would probably be one. That's something that the Board of Selectmen does not do, it's something that the first selectman currently does, that's something that the first selectman would not do in the future if it was delegated to the town administrator. So if there's a, if there's a question about performance or any kind of question that comes up, I suspect, depending upon the question, it would go to either the first selectman or the town administrator. And if the first selectman wanted to bring it up with the selectmen, or thought it was a subject that ought to be considered by the selectmen, that would be done that way.
And I think we would follow the model like Ellington has adopted, it's a very similar model. I know the Commission, I think, met with Ellington, and they've done it. You bring up some great questions, and I think, you know...
It's worked for Ellington. I mean, they honestly bought it, and it works.
It's working very well, in fact. But again, we have to continually remind ourselves that we are not Ellington. So even though it's worked well in Ellington, the way they set it up, we don't necessarily need to mirror what they have done, but should consider what they've done and why they did it, how it's worked out. Yeah, so the unique thing is, Ellington did this three years ago, so we have an opportunity to look at what they've done and make corrections if need be, and improvements if we can, and very much.
And we've, and we've talked to the Selectmen down there, to Tim and I, over one time.
Yeah.
And we talked to them.
Yeah, we had both the Selectmen and the Administrator come in before the Charter Revision Commission, and they came in to speak for a good half hour to an hour about what they do, how they did it, why they did it, what kind of communications they put out to the public, which I thought were very valuable, and so that there was no misunderstanding about what was being proposed.
Okay.
So I think the thing is, like, they've run it out for three years, and things have been going very well, you know, Ralph.
But I think your questions are definitely legitimate, and in first, it's one question about if you've got a question or a complaint about something, who do you bring it to? I think it'll be, should be pretty obvious when we figure out what the delegated responsibilities are and who the initial first point of contact ought to be.
Well, I would, the purpose is also, is you would hope that the, this person and the Selectmen are going to communicate on a regular basis with it, you know, and that that communication will be there. So if somebody comes to Town Hall and goes into Mr. Keeney's office and has a concern, I would hope that he would share that with the, this person that we hired, you know what I'm saying? Then, and if somebody comes in and talks to him about something, I would hope that gentleman would then come and, to him and talk about it, or us, you know what I'm saying?
Facilitate most of those things in that office.
Yeah, so I'm just, I'm hoping that there's a cooperation between these two positions.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? I don't want these people to be operating like satellites without talking to one another.
I think my, my suggestion, though, which I think is likely to happen, is that one of the primary jobs of the Administrator would be to supervise the departments, and would be in charge also of reviewing their annual performance, taking any complaints there are about what is or is not happening in departments, and would be the first point of contact, I would think.
All right, one more. Looking at the Town Hall, you're out of office space. This guy's going to have to have an office. Does that mean we got to add on to the Town Hall? So we should...
See, we didn't think of that, but...
What the cost is.
How much money do you think that's worth?
Well, hey, we got a Board of Finance member here, she's going to want to know, okay? So what are you going to do for an office for the guy?
That's a good point. We haven't figured that out yet.
Okay.
That's a very good point, though.
All right.
I've been thinking about it, needless to say.
He won't be sitting at a desk in the parking lot.
Hello.
Yes, ma'am, hello. Could you just state your name and address?
Susan Peck, ninety-one Sky Ridge Drive. I've been trying to follow along, and as you can see, everybody in town is busy except for us tonight, so I've been trying to follow along as best I can. So my concerns, I hear that the town administrator will be a good thing for Summers. I guess, so we're here, you guys have done all this work as a Charter Revision Commission, and, but we don't have any factual, or do we have any job description for this town administrator if we say we want a town administrator? How long would it be before we hired a town administrator if we vote for it in, in November?
Good question. Yeah, so the town administrator would not actually start as the town administrator until, I believe, two years after.
It would take just a year just to formulate job descriptions, figure out budgetary expense, you know, the whole, and I, I think it would take just a year.
Well, it's written, though, in the Charter, that the Selectmen, the first selectman would serve his next term, and the town administrator would take effect upon the expiration of the next term or the resignation of the current first selectman. So that's how it's written.
So in other words, the town administrator would probably not be hired until sometime in the year two thousand twenty-seven.
What, what's the next time? Twenty-five?
The next election would be November twenty-seven after this, so...
Yeah.
Right. Okay.
It'd probably be part of the fiscal twenty-eight budget.
Yeah.
Still got two years of budget.
Okay, all right. So we have a lot of time. So I guess people will be asking, what is, so my question, the town administrator, okay? Patricia? Brian? You guys, you run your department? Are you the, are you the boss of your department?
Just the accessories, yes.
You're, yes, correct. Brian, are you the boss of your department?
No.
Yes, okay. Tim Keeney is your boss?
Hmm.
Okay. So Tim Keeney's going to go down a tier.
No.
No.
He would stay at the top.
No, it's still, it's still remaining.
So we're going to add more upper management.
It's a man of selection, but delegate responsibilities to the town administrator.
Are they talking about remaining at the rate of pay?
No.
No.
No, okay, all right.
Good question.
I think at some point, we're going to need, it's so hard to say that we can vote on this now and not have any of the description of what it's going to be.
It's in the Charter. It's in the post-Charter.
Right.
Language. The description, the job description is in there.
Okay.
So all you have to do is request from the town clerk, whatever you can read it. Yep.
Yeah, give her copy of the draft.
The Charter Revision Commission came up with a question, they came up with a ballot explanation for what, what that means, and then it came up with a language that should be changed in the Charter. So everything you're saying is true.
Right.
And it should be covered, and we're not voting on it now, we're voting on it in November.
Correct.
And so, yeah.
Okay, all right.
You know, also, you can look at other towns that have this, and I'm sure the Charter Revision Commission could tell you those towns surrounding us...
Yes.
...who have gone to this type of a position, why they did. So if you have any curiosity about that, Bolton has done this, correct?
Well, I don't feel like I should have to go to another town to get my information from the town of Summers.
No, I'm just saying that if, we're just, we were all...
There's only ten of us here that even care, so, you know, so, okay, town...
No, I'm just saying if you're reviewing the questions...
Yes, if I did, if I did.
And then saying, and we also did some investigation, too, and I'm sure they did, too.
Right, and I hear that.
And that's the point, is that you, if you have questions about it, you go to other places that have utilized this, and ask them how it's worked, and whether it's been successful or not.
Yeah.
And that's what I'm telling you, I mean...
Is that you guys have done that.
Yeah, and that's what, that's the first of the, of this group, that...
So the town administrator is just for the Town Hall? It doesn't have to do with the fire department, or the schools, or...
Those people are not the schools.
Department heads.
The fire chief would report to the town administrator.
Okay.
So all of us, it's a layer between the first selectman and the rest of the directors. It's a funneling point there.
Okay. I just, I just, if I was the boss of my department, I don't know that I'd want to have another boss.
Well, maybe, I mean, maybe it'd be helpful, I think you're asking just for explanation for people who don't live in this world every day.
Yeah.
So there's really two models that towns could look at, right? So one model would be to hire a city or town manager. So towns like Weatherfield, I think Glastonbury, Hartford, Enfield, Manchester, that person is the CEO and Chief Administrative Officer of the town, and they report to a council. So it's essentially a council manager, talent has that model. What the feedback we've heard in Summers for many years is they still want an elected, accountable chief executive, however, they feel that the administration...
And a board of selectmen.
But they feel the administration of the town should be professionalized. So this model kind of gives us both, where you have an executive who is accountable and has to run for election every two years, but at the same time, you have an administrator that can handle the day-to-day. Because the other scenario, that's not that far-fetched, is that the three of us decide not to run in the same election.
Right.
I mean, literally, you would have a whole new board of selectmen with no experience, including your chief executive and chief administrator.
So when you have the town administrator, you're going to do it...
You would have some continuity.
It's called, you know, consistency.
And then, yeah, because we're running on people...
That's the idea.
Okay, okay. I'm okay with that.
And also, they have, they're supposed to have some other background and skill set, too, that elected officials might not have.
As far as with the state or the federal, or, yes, I've talked to you guys about that, yeah.
And this is why we're looking for somebody that has, you know, can bring in some more background into this.
Yeah, another good example would be being able to apply for grants.
Right.
The person, I would think, would be one of another primary responsibilities would be grant writing.
Okay, or trying to bring, like, you've tried for how many years trying to get somebody to build on the Mill property, and we don't have any luck, because we're from here, but maybe somebody from bigger places might be able to do that.
But the superintendent would not report to this person, the Board of Ed, so they have a separate statutory, discovered by state statute, so the superintendent is the chief executive for the Board of Education.
Is that for the whole state?
Yes.
That's how every town and city...
That's how state laws.
Oh, yeah.
So they get a one-line allocation from the town.
Yeah.
And then the Board of Education is responsible for that allocation.
Yeah, okay. I just, I haven't had a chance to look at, I probably did, you probably gave it to me.
It's okay.
When I went on vacation.
Don't worry about it.
Number four, shall the dollar amount over which a special appropriation exceeds, thus requiring approval by vote of a town meeting be revised? I feel like that statement even, it's, that's not the statement.
Yeah, it's a little confusing.
Yeah, it's an confusing question.
What they're talking about here, is it right?
I, I understand what they're, but this is not a good statement to present publicly.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree, I think it's...
Just reading it, I could tell that.
Okay.
I'm just reading it, I'm, it's just, there's a problem there.
So we can maybe clarify that when we put it on...
Yeah, we will definitely.
I will make it two sentences.
On the ballot, you know, on the ballot, we can clarify that.
Yeah, okay, I'm good for now. Thank you.
Sorry, text, can give you more details.
Yeah, good point, maybe two sentences would be better.
Hi, Giselle Janice, sixteen, Daniel. So as I stand, I'm not saying that I'm against, but as I listen, I am wondering if we really put some thought into these processes that are being proposed. So we're talking about, starting with the first one, shall the town clerk become an appointed rather than an elected position? We don't have a job description, we don't have how much that person might be making, we're not, we don't have anything requiring qualifications and so forth. So I think that to ask us to vote on something that's unclear would probably not be an appropriate thing to do. The other thing is, I think it's about time that Summers begins to think about diversity in this town, because I see no people of color in these positions. And so how, how would you go about assuring that we, because when we're talking about elected, appointed positions, we know that this is a very political town, and we know that the balance of power is not fair in this town, so how would we know that somebody is really being considered for their qualifications rather than who they are? You know, so there are just so many concerns that I have right now. And again, one of the biggest ones for me is really bringing some diversity into this town and thinking about people that look like me, that are represented. We want people to represent everyone in this town. So those are just some of my concerns right now.
Thank you.
So I would say, as far as the clerk is concerned, just to clarify, so the clerk's duties are defined by state statute, so the current job description for the clerk would remain, the current duties would remain, again, they're defined by, every town has a town clerk, that would remain, the salary would be set by the first selectman. But I think the, some of the impetus behind this is that, under the current model, the town clerk needs to be a resident of Summers, right? They need to be an elector of Summers. So by making it not an elected position, an appointed position, someone who lives in Enfield, someone who lives in Suffield would be eligible, would be brought in the pool. I mean, town clerks, it's now a very... I mean, town clerks, it's now a very professional job. It's a very, the certification process, it's, I don't want to say it's not like it used to be, but, you know, 20 years ago, I think the job looked a lot different than what the job looks like now. So that's some of the reasoning behind the movement.
Yeah, and I'd say to piggyback on that, currently, you can have, you know, anybody who raises their hand become the town clerk, and they do have a lot of responsibilities, especially now with elections, versus having, and I know it says appointed on here, appointed isn't just picking your friend out of the crowd and saying you're going to become the town clerk, it's appointing them to a term. And so you have a professional review process and people with qualifications that are coming from other towns, such as Enfield or so forth, where they may be an assistant town clerk for the last 15 years, but the current town clerk isn't planning on retiring any time soon. And so that gives them the opportunity to go and become an actual town clerk somewhere and use their certifications and bring a professional into the position rather than just, you know, whoever raised their hand to be on the ballot that term.
But I think the point that Bill made with regards to technicality is really important, and that the fact is that the job description is by statute as to what the clerk does. And the bottom line is that the level of technicality has become more, has increased more over the last several years. And the concern is that you want to make sure you have someone in that position that knows how to do the job. And that may not happen if you just elect the person. And then your question about diversity, I agree with you, the town is not very diverse. But I think that the issue of qualifications relate to merit. That's how people ought to be hired, is how, whether they're meritorious or not, not on any other factor. So the question is, how do you gauge whether that was applied? I suppose you do it on a question, basically, you raise the question, is that does the person merit, does he have the level of education and responsibility and ability to do the job? I'm not sure, I know that you would like to see some kind of diversity required, but that's not going to happen, I can tell you right now.
And why is that not going to happen?
Just because I believe that people ought to be elected based on their ability, not on their race.
So when we talk about diversity, are we saying that ability is an issue?
Well, Giselle, I think... No, I'm just saying it shouldn't be the determining issue.
No, I'm not, okay. So what about our superintendent? I am not, excuse me, one person, a superintendent? A superintendent breaks. It happens to be very qualified, very, very qualified, of course.
Go ahead, let her speak.
So my point is this, we have a lot of educated people, and it doesn't matter what they look like, right?
I get it.
So what I'm saying is that we can find people that are very, that are, that represent, that look like I do, that are extremely qualified. And again, you're talking about the town clerks, so you said it yourself, I don't think there's a lot of educational qualities that's necessary for this position. So I am saying that there are a lot of...
There's a lot of education.
Exactly.
It's a three-year certification. How is education?
It, precisely.
Right. It's a certification program.
Precisely.
Yeah, you just need a lot of classes.
Exactly. And so, and so it depends on, so your advertisement, first of all. Maybe advertisement, how you advertise this position is going to matter. So if you're trying to hire people that are qualified and that are more diverse, you cannot just advertise in Summers. And that's the point I'm trying to make.
There are requirements for the job, and people understand what those requirements are if you're going to hire someone to do those things.
Right. And again, I mean, we have, black women are the most qualified in this country. I just want to let people know that. So you can find a lot of qualified people.
I mean, we could try to, I mean, you know, I don't think anybody...
The most educated, I meant.
I don't think anybody's trying to say to people of color, you can't apply here in Summers.
I thought I was, no, no, that's not what I said, but I thought I heard about hiring people who are qualified, and I thought I garnered from that, that we're looking for qualified people.
I was talking about merit, again, whether a person is meritoriously able to do the job.
Yeah. I'm sure there are a lot of people who can do this job.
Well, that's great. Well, that's how they get hired. That's how they get hired.
You know, it's also, remember, this is a pretty lily-white community, as you well know.
Exactly.
And it's also, how many people then want to come here and work here, too, who could be of color? And, you know, so that might be difficult to get people to come even and apply.
It all depends on how much you're paying.
Well, I know, but I'm just saying, that might be the reason why you're not getting a lot of people applying, is because what the community looks like. Yeah, I don't think anybody in this town is saying, you know, to somebody of color, don't come and apply here. I don't think anybody's sending that message out.
Well, I know you're not sending that message, I'm quite aware of that. But I'm just saying, we have to try, and it has to start somewhere.
I appreciate that.
Well, we would agree with you on that, but first of all, they got to walk in the door.
Yes, absolutely.
You know what I'm saying? If they don't walk in the door, it's hard to hire somebody if they don't walk in the door.
That's true. So where do we advertise for positions?
Indeed, on our town website.
Indeed, okay.
Depending on the position, we use like the GFPA in Connecticut, the government finance officers, if it's CCM.
Yeah, different town clerks have their own...
They send it to a lot of...
We do that as well. So we're trying to get it out there as much as possible.
I just want to, you know, make sure that we consider that, you know.
At one point, there was one position we were hiring for, I think we got like 85 applications. Kim and I had to sit and flip through every single one and make sure, like, did you check all the boxes of you have all the, you know, minimum qualifications in the job posting to begin with before? And then we made two piles, and then we started going, you know, so it's definitely, there are a lot of positions, there are other positions we might get one or two applications for. It all depends, like you said, it's the position and it's the pay.
Yeah, another question is qualification, of course. Like, we just had a building inspector position that we hired for that...
That was posted for like 18 months.
And we also had a sanitarium that we applied for, and...
That lasted for about six weeks.
Yeah, we had, I think, eight or nine applicants, and we only had one that was qualified.
Required a certification.
And, you know, in some of the positions, it is difficult to get qualified people to apply.
Yeah.
But I think what we, I mean, back to my point with the clerk would apply also to the town administrator, and I think to your point, you know, we're actually removing barriers in this case. I don't want to get too philosophical, but I mean, a big barrier in Summers, if you want to be the chief administrative officer, right now, under this model, you have to live in town, and you have to be a voter in town.
Right.
And, you know, in Summers, there's not a lot of affordable housing, let's face it. So it's a barrier to people, the same with the clerk. You know, so I think by eliminating that, we could have a town administrator who lives in Enfield.
So maybe this is a time to start looking at some of those charters and maybe start making some amendments.
Well, that would be the revision in front of us.
That's, so that's what, exactly. And looking at more of those is what I'm saying, because some of them are truly outdated.
Yeah.
Yeah, we agree with you on that.
Thank you for your comments.
Yes, thank you.
All right.
Can you say your name and address?
Sean Curtis, 36 Lover's Lane on Summers. I just want to compliment the group. I've been engaged in the process throughout as just sitting in the public audience, and certainly much of the feedback has been very constructive, and I would say progress over perfection. I think that, you know, what I appreciate is that we're trying to take steps forward to move forward and do what's right for the town of Summers and its current and kind of progressive state of which we're trying to move. I do, in town, I'm going to ask it as a statement slash question, what percent of town employees in town hall live in Summers, roughly?
I would probably say about 30%.
30% of the town hall?
Or just, I just, town hall, I mean, we have 80, how many employees? I mean...
In town hall, we have 11, and I would say three of them.
Yeah.
Deb, and, yeah, it's about 30% Deb, Tim and...
So that is about right, yeah.
And the other is, it's more for context, you know, because the perception is, I advocate strongly that the town administrator, I appreciate the comments on diversity, and, you know, beyond elected officials, I'll just say, as serving on boards and commissions in town, there are plenty of open seats in this town to get involved, and I would encourage more people to get involved and, you know, and express interest in those.
Thank you for those comments.
We can't even get a quorum, you know, hopefully with some new appointees, but get a quorum on ZBA.
If you can convince people in this town to start getting involved, that would be good.
So I think we need to get more people involved, and, you know, beyond just elected and appointed positions. I'll say my piece, I oppose strongly that the chief administrative officer is not a resident of Summers. I believe strongly that the chief administrative officer should be a resident in this town, should have, you know, be engaged within the community, just as a superintendent, I believe, up until the prior, the current superintendent needed to be a resident in town of Summers.
No, we've not been a superintendent for recent years.
They lived at Glastonbury.
No, you can't get there. Yeah.[1629.13]